I now call to order this March 4th Friendswood City Council meeting and announce that we have a quorum. Tonight's invocation will be led by Pastor Mike Cervantes of New Hope Church. Please stand and when Mike's done preaching at us, we will say the pledge.
Well, in that case, you know, there's an old saying, you never give a preacher a mic. You know, I do want to say one thing, Proverbs chapter three verses five through six says, "Trust in the Lord with all your heart and lean on your own understanding in all your ways acknowledge him, and he'll make your path straight." And I love that about this city. I love that about our leadership. I truly believe that's what we do, and that's why we keep finding success and blessings. And so I want to pray. Heavenly Father, we invite you into this place. We know you're everywhere, God, but I thank you so much for our leaders, Lord, and I pray that we continue to just have a legacy of trust, Father, trusting in you as you guide our steps. Guide every meeting, Father. Guide our leaders as they make decisions for us, Father. I thank you that you always provide, where you guide, you provide. And I know as our city continues to grow and move and things are changing, God, may you just continue to guide our steps. Say thank you for them. May you bless this meeting. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thanks Pastor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Thanks, Mike. What happened? You swapped your chair? All right. Item four, council comments and reports. Councilmember Rocky, lead us off.
Yeah, I got to attend the high school state swimming championship a week ago, and the boys' team took second place in the state, only off of first place by a couple of points. And it was up to the last rate. Very exciting. They had two boys that each won two state championships, and they had a medley relay team that set a state record. So five for the boys. The girls took fourth. They had one young lady who won two events. And then they had a relay, I think, that took third. And the girls' team had no seniors. So they'll be a lot of fun to watch next year. So congratulations to them.
That's awesome. Councilmember Branson.
Thank you, Mayor.
Trying to get some.
Yes, I do.
You're looking at me.
So our Chair of EDC, Susan Azamakis, led us on a discovery trip, as she calls them, to Conroe. And a lot of folks, actually from this dais, were there, along with members in the community. And we did learn a lot of good things on Conroe.
Only three of us, by the way.
Yes, I'm sorry.
So we did not have a court on our trip, so.
You are.
Pointing that out.
The mayor is absolutely.
Pointing that out to the lead gats in the room.
It was a great trip. That's all I have.
Councilmember Hank.
So as the liaison to KFB, I'm going to tell everyone that we just had a dedication ceremony for Kimberly Ramirez. She gets a new ferry house in the Ferry Trail Garden, and a bench and a tree was planted in her memory at Stevenson Park. She was an excellent employee, the whole Parks and Rec staff, as well as everybody else in the city. They just do great work. But we will miss Kimberly. She's worked for the city how long, Mo? Twenty?
Twenty-two years.
Twenty-two years, and she was a workhorse. She did so much for that committee. And then Hope Village had a fundraiser this weekend with a fish fry and raised lots of money for their residents. If you don't know, Hope Village is a place where residents with intellectual disabilities can reside on their own in an adult living atmosphere, and they are funded totally by donations. And so that happened this weekend, and just, you know, lots of things happening in Friendswood with lots of volunteers. And so it's a great place to be.
Councilmember Grifon.
Well, we're gonna have an update on flood projects here in Friendswood, so I'm not gonna steal anyone's thunder, and I'll let Hill discuss that, so I'm good.
Okay. All right. Councilmember Matranga.
I'm gonna make sure I get this right, so I'm actually gonna read it. I am very excited, and I truly am, to announce that the enrollment in the Heroes of Friendswood Banner Program, which honors Friendswood's veterans, both living, deceased, and our active-duty members of the armed forces, is now open. For those that have not heard about the program, banners with the veteran's name, picture, and service branch will be displayed on the light poles throughout the Friendswood Downtown District for both Memorial Day and Veterans Holidays. This program is being implemented by the Friends of Downtown Friendswood. And for more information, including how to sponsor someone, go to their website, fdfa.org. And that's what I was supposed to read, but I will mention one P.S. to that. One of the people that has really spearheaded that program is Richard Sassen, who's on our Planning and Zoning Commission. And Richard saw this up in the Northeast, brought it to Friendswood, and has been working tirelessly to bring this to everybody here in Friendswood. And I am very excited that that program is now kicked off. And so go to fdfa.org if you would like to sponsor someone for that program. Mayor, I would thought that you would have mentioned that you did lead the Marty Paws Parade. You didn't say anything, so I want to make sure that you just didn't forget about it.
I haven't spoken yet.
Ah, I just, then I will let, Mayor, well, you ought to say something about that.
Councilmember Aaron Wirth, you got something?
I just, I went to the Hope Village Fest also. Kim Brison died, invited me out there the first year I've been able to do it, and it's truly an amazing thing to see. If any of y'all haven't been to that, the fish fry. The fish was great, but the crowd and the volunteers were amazing. I, five of us, were in attendance there, and I would say well over three, four hundred people. And it was, it was a great experience for a great cause, and I encourage you all to check out any events they do over there, check out their resale shop, because it's really amazing work they do over there with no government funding.
So yes, I will mention this weekend.
Sorry, Mayor.
That's all right. That we, another Friends of Downtown Friendswood Association event. This is the first time they did it, called Marty Paws, and it was a dog parade. We all started over in Old City Park and gathered, and we had over fifty dogs, all dressed in Marty bra attire. So paraded over here to the farmer's market, where conveniently, my granddaughter sells dog treats at the farmer's market. So there was a method to the madness there, but we, we had a great time. Looking forward to, again, doing it next year. So on a, maybe the March 1st of next year, as I'm proposing. With the help of the city, Parks and Rec, thank you guys for helping out with that, but it was a fun event. So good time had by all. Okay. Item five.
Mayor, may I say one more thing?
Oh, by the way.
I just wanted to congratulate yourself and Trish and John Ellisor for getting to run unopposed, an experience I only got once, but congratulations.
Thank you. Okay. So Trish has had enough. Item five, public comment. In order to comply with the provisions of the Texas Open Meetings Act, the City Council may not deliberate any item not listed on the agenda. As such, the City Council will listen to public comment and may one refer the item to City Management for further action or two, direct staff replacement of said item on a future agenda. During public comment, the public shall comply with rules of decorum. The rules allow each person three minutes to present information. The time clock will flash a yellow light when there are thirty seconds remaining on the allotted time and flash a red light with a beeping sound when the time has expired. If you have any questions, please direct them to me. I have three cards here. First one, Twana Phillips?
Phillips, yes.
Yes, ma'am.
I've never done this before.
Well, yeah, you come up and speak into the microphone. This is so we can record you and get you on our cameras and document this.
All right, so the reason I'm here today, my name is Twana Phillips. I live at fourteen oh eight South Friendswood Drive, townhome thirteen oh one, Friendswood, Texas. I'm part of the Ashra Village HOA in charge of the architectural and landscaping design of the neighborhood. We are revamping our neighborhood, and we have a lot of projects going on, one of which, I had the signs redone for the neighborhood. If you'll go by there, you'll see them. The city approved permit for two of the signs that go on the brick wall on each side, and it's gated. So we had a sign also made to go center of the two gates. That was not approved. I'm asking today that that be reconsidered. We're doing a lot of work in our neighborhood. I think a lot of people misconstrue our neighborhood as like a condo or rental property of some sort. It is not. They're privately owned townhomes. We bought ours as it was being built twenty years ago. So we're, we're doing a lot in our neighborhood with the landscaping. We replaced the motors in the front. We've got a lot of projects going on to make it look more appealing. So that is why I'm here today. I did speak with Becky in the permit department, and she said that probably the best way to settle this was to attend one of these meetings and to make a request for that. Now, I did have two signs approved. Let me also tell you that when we, in the beginning, we had five signs. We took three of those off the fence, had the fence sanded, repainted, and all I'm requesting is to put up one center sign. I have a photo of it there. I've printed off copies for everyone. It is a beautiful sign. And it also resembles the ones on the brick wall as you come into the neighborhood. It looks really nice, but we don't want to go ahead and put that sign up when it's not permitted. So I'm asking that you reconsider or let us put our sign up.
Well, thanks, Mrs. Phillips. If you could, on your way out, talk to our Assistant City Manager, Stephen Ray, back there.
Okay.
And he'll talk about the process.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm not sending you to the door, but when you leave, I didn't mean on your. Rusty Burkett.
Thanks, guys. Howdy. Hey, I'm just here as a private citizen at twenty-four oh six Butler Drive, and my request is simple. Just when the timing's right, I live in a beautiful neighborhood back there, but we have some really bad streets. I think I saw Councilman Aaron Wirth fall down one time back on Pine, walking back there on one of our seismic boulders that's coming up in our asphalt. But anyway, when the timing's right and after maybe a project or two that's completed back there, I ask y'all to keep us in mind for, and I know the HOA has been involved, talking to y'all, for some street repaving back there. Because like I said, it's a very nice neighborhood in Friendswood, and no sidewalks, narrow streets, and in need of some major repairs. So thank y'all.
Thanks, Rusty. We checked that one, Marad, for. Kevin Holland.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. You guys seem to be having fun up here. Nice change, huh?
Now I like the old days.
Now I like the old days. Hey, I just want to point out, tomorrow's Super Tuesday, time for everybody to get out and vote. Followed by May 4th, there's a, no contested election for council, but there's a highly contested opportunity for the Galveston County Consolidated Drainage District. I'm running for position one. Lonnie and Teresa are also serving now, and they've exemplified a servant's heart, like everybody in TV land, to support us all. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you.
All right, with council's allowance, I'd like to move item seven, Charlie, seven C up. Receive the Friendswood Historical Society Annual Report, presented by Dave Smith of the Board of Directors. Or you got handouts?
You have some pictures coming your ways, just so we can give you a little visual aid. Thank you, Mayor and Council.
You're welcome.
It's always nice to come and share with you the work that the Historical Society is doing. We have two museums. A lot of the information I'm gonna give you tonight, you know already, so I'm taking advantage of the public service announcement. So anyone who's watching and doesn't know might be educated a little bit about what the Historical Society does. So we have a museum called the Brown Museum, which is on Skyview, and we have the Perry House, which is on Spreading Oaks. For landmarks, the Brown Museum is next to Sherman Williams and Hometown Bank. The Perry House is across from the Heritage Gardeners and right next to the Old Junior High School and the old downtown part of Friendswood. Those museums are open from ten to two, the first Saturday of every month. That's coordinated with the High Schools Museum that they have at the Old Junior High School that opened at the same time. We also do special tours for people that request them. That's not unusual. Many times during the year, we'll have folks that will come through with families who are related to some of the original founding members of Friendswood that want to bring those generations through to take a look, as well as other civic groups and other historical societies as well. This past year, we had a wonderful ice cream social, a traditional ice cream social. We had over four hundred folks that came out and enjoyed some Blue Bell ice cream. This year, we did it close to the Perry House. Our neighbors are the Friends Church, wonderful neighbors that collaborate with us on many things. But this year, they allowed us to use their parking lot in the area outside of the church to have that social, and it was well received. We have to thank several groups who worked in conjunction with the Historical Society to make that happen. The Friendswood High School Art Club is the muscle behind the scoop. Keep Friendswood Beautiful, as well as the Friends of the Downtown Friendswood Association, were also involved in that. This year, we were blessed to have the musical talents of a gentleman by the name of George Cowart that provided the entertainment for us during the ice cream social. That's not the Cowart of Cowart Creek. We also want to thank our volunteers who do our docening, our hosts at the museums. We have over twenty-five volunteers that have gone through the training that's required to be able to host and to take people through the museums, and they're very important to us. That's a relatively new group that's been put into place just after COVID, and they've worked hard to get that schedule going and be able to do that work for us, and they're very much appreciated. The Historical Society also had their annual Christmas tree lighting. This year, the kids from Friends Church provided us with carols. They take a hayride around the city and then come and sing for us. The Heritage Gardeners provided the gingerbread, the Sasser family, their famous wassail. And we retreated to the sounds of Friends Winds, which is an ensemble of woodwind instrumentalists this year. That was quite entertaining. But as always, the man in red provides the magic. So every year, we do a physical assessment of our facilities, both of the museums. And there's one project that we've been anticipating and paying attention to for a while now. This is at the Perry House, and it's something we're gonna have to tackle and begin this year. And I want you to know about that, because your support means a lot to this kind of a project for us. So the Perry House was originally constructed with Cypress boards. We think that the wood came from trees that were down in the nineteen-hundred storm. They're thick and they're hard. They're almost like concrete. They're very difficult to nail into. But it's a lap and gap type of construction, and it's not sealed. That type of old construction, they simply put them together. Well, over time, those boards dry. When the house was reconstructed, they sealed them with modern-day caulk, is what we would think of, of what we found. On top of those boards, they put burlap, and on top of the board, the burlap, they installed the wallpaper. Pretty interesting. The problem is, is that over time, that caulking has dried up, the wood has dried up further. And so now we have the humidity that we all enjoy so much here along the coast coming in and out of the Perry House and ruining that wallpaper. It's literally melting off of the walls in the front two rooms, all of the exterior walls. So that's a project that we're gonna have to tackle this year. And as you can imagine, taking all of that down, retreating the walls, prepping them, getting them looking again, it's gonna be significant. So wanted to keep you up to date on some of the work that we're doing on those facilities that we had. I also want to mention that we were very grateful to Keep Friendswood Beautiful this year. They worked together with us in helping us with the improvements of our beds. And so we've developed an Adopt a Bed program. These aren't sleeping beds. These are gardens, flower beds. So the Adopt a Bed program has allowed us to work together with local citizens, some private citizens, and also some public groups who are now volunteering, and they're growing vegetables and flowers in those beautiful new flower beds that Keep Friendswood Beautiful helped us to build. Great project. That, in conjunction with another project that you're gonna see coming this year, we've been talking to a local chef who is doing the sweat equity work out there and working on the grounds. Put in walking stones, landscaping, flower beds, some new shade structures. We're gonna have the ability to do some farm and vine-type dining on the outside of the Perry House. That, in conjunction with the new artwork that's gonna be going in out in front of the Perry House, between the church and the Perry House, we're gonna have an area where people are gonna really be able to enjoy the ambiance associated with the exterior of the building. So when we lost some trees at the Friends Church parchment development due to the development, as well as the right-of-way cleanup that was done, those trees were saved. They were taken over to the yard and kept, and a group of local citizens have put the funds and the wherewithal together to have those trees carved into artwork. And the very first piece that you're gonna see here next thirty days, maybe, Sally's well aware of it, she's been working on the, on the project, is going to be placed in front of the Perry House for all to see. It'll be kind of a meditative area, a little bit of a garden area, but it depicts the early life of the Quakers in Friendswood with that giant, monstrous tree trunk that has been carving. The same artists that did the woodworking down in Galveston did this piece of art for us. And we're looking forward to having that, as well as the ability to have some private events there, all under the idea that that additional foot traffic coming onto the site will bring more awareness to the Historical Society, their facilities, and in turn, educate the public about the history of Friendswood. So there you have it.
Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you very much for letting me come and talk to you.
Appreciate Councilmember Rocky and Councilmember Branson for serving on your board and helping out with Friendswood Historical Society.
Can I make one comment?
Mayor pro tem, Rocky.
We, we got donated a, what, eighty- or ninety-year-old buckboard, you know, that you would ride with a horse, and we have it on the yard of the Perry House. But if anyone knows, anyone who was interested in an Eagle Scout project, we have one for them to build a lean to, to cover it. So anyone in the audience or the TV audience, just get ahold of myself or Sally or Dave, and we can help you out.
So that was a donation from the Buckman family. It was well received. I gave you pictures of it to be able to take a look and see what it looks like. It's a very interesting piece. You don't see them very often. That particular buckboard has actually been in the Friendswood Fourth of July Parade several times. So any of us that are old enough to remember it would, might recognize it. And Mike, if you'll let me, one other thing I wanted to say was to pass on our thanks from society to Marad and his staff, both James Tony, as well as our city attorney, and great help in getting all of our paperwork and everything ready for us. And I'm pleased to announce that we have an updated certificate filing from the Secretary of State, thanks to the work that Karen and her staff has helped us with. So they've been a pleasure.
What does that certificate say? What's it?
It says, "We're good."
Do I need one? I mean, okay.
No.
Are you a nonprofit?
It means they're a nonprofit.
Nonprofit, in good standing, okay.
Good, in good standing.
All you had to do is say those words. I understand.
David, I also have a tree that we cut down over at Anson Joan, which is a legacy tree, and I've told Sally about it, and I'm excited to see the work that they did on the original one. But I too have one over there that I would like to see made into something beautiful.
Fantastic.
And we have so noted that, so thank you, Robert. Appreciate the masons donating that to us.
It's a great project.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you all for what you do.
Okay, going back to our original agenda, item six, Special Recognition and Acknowledgements. Present the City of Friendswood Five-Star Spirit Award for the fourth quarter of 2023 to Marcos Martinez, a project manager in the Engineering Department. City Manager, Rod Kabir.
Thank you, Mayor. And Marcos, can you come on up? As you know, Mayor and Council, four times a year, we take the opportunity to recognize a staff member that's voted on by their peers for something they did that's above and beyond their normal job duties. In Marcos's particular situation, this truly exemplifies what we, what we love having in terms of our employees. This past summer, Marcos was on his way to a job site and noticed a young boy by the age of five or six years old without a shirt standing on the side of the road. Much like many of us do sadly, we just continue to drive and just assume all is okay. Marcos realized that this young man did not have any adults around him. He pulled over, engaged the kid, who the kid started crying immediately and found out that he was lost. So he contacted PD, and we were able to get the kid reunited with his parents. He had wandered off. So thank you, Marcos, for not continuing to just ignore the young child and for turning a bad situation into a good one.
Thank you.
Would you like to introduce your family that's here?
Those are my wife, Sandra, my son, Alec, and my dad.
Thanks, y'all, for coming. Thank you, Marcus.
All right, well done. Back to item seven A, receive the Planning and Zoning Commission Annual Report, presented by Chairman Tom Hinckley.
Thank you for your time. Not too long this year, so we'll keep it kind of short for you. Start with just a quick rundown of the commission. So of course, we have the support of Becky Bennett, Aubrey Harburn, Aubrey Harburn, and Karen Horner, Commissions, myself, Tom Hinckley, our longest-serving members, Richard Sassen, Travis Mann, Karen Kerner, or Kathy Kerner, Brian Bounds, Marcus Rose, and Marcia Conrad. Marcia replaced Councilmember Matranga when he departed last year. We also have council liaisons, Joe Matranga and Trish Hanks. Next, action items taken, plats. We approved two preliminary plats in 2023, one for Nixon Estates, the second for Friendswood Trails Sections 4B and 5A. We approved one preliminary plat extension for Friendswood Trails Section 3A and 4A. We approved four final plats for Hagedwood Estates, Georgetown Detention Base in Phase One, Nixon Estates, Division C of Lot 64, approved one replat of Jeter Memorial Funeral Home, and approved one final plat extension for Avalon at Friendswood Detention Final Plat. Five site, excuse me, five site plans were approved. The All Britain, which I think everybody can agree is an attractive project for downtown, Challenge Elite Sports, down off of Black Hawk, Big City Manufacturing, Site One Landscaping Storage, and 110 and 112 Hunter's Lane Shell Buildings. 2023 zoning changes. We developed recommendations on seven zoning changes. One for 401 North Friendswood Drive, the Jeter Facility from CSC to SFRP, or SFR. 801 West Parkwood Avenue from SFR to CSC. 502 South Friendswood Drive and 107 South, or 107 Spreading Oaks Drive, the Friends Church from SFR to DD with an SUP for number 8131 Religious Organizations and number 624 Social Assistance. 209 East Wedgewood Drive from PUD to OPD and allow SUP to remain. Friendswood City Center from PUD to revised PUD. 901 South Friendswood Drive from NC to DD. 903 South Friendswood Drive from NC to DD. Next, 2023 actions ordinance changes. We developed two, developed two recommendations on two ordinance changes and zero resolutions. Number one, update permitted use table, including NAICS updates, commercial uses, and industrial districts, and remove S1. And then amendments to sign ordinance. And then amendments to sign ordinance. 2023 P&amp;Z activities. We held sixteen commission meetings down from twenty in 2022. We had one retreat and numerous subcommittee meetings. Conducted annual review of permitted use table. Recommendations made and changes were adopted via ordinance 2023-18. Two commissioners and staff attended the APA Texas Conference this year, or last year, and we held a retreat to establish and prioritize the goals for the commission. So our key objectives for 2024 projects. Continue work with staff and city council to update the comprehensive plan. Workshop mobile vendors with city council. Review and update the zoning ordinance. Adopt a formal process of updating the future land use map and updating the requirements for special events. Next, adopt a new official zoning map. Research microzoning for undeveloped commercial along FM 528. And I think that's specifically the area out towards Alvin, so. Review recommend updates to the Design Criteria Manual regarding minimum parking regulations for funeral homes and gas stations. Review park dedication requirements once parks master plan is updated. And training on various planning-related topics. And on that, we've started a new process where Aubrey is presenting us a planning session every few meetings. So just to kind of get everybody in the commission updated on proper processes. Any comments or questions?
Good job, Tom.
No, good job. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Hey, item seven B, receive the zoning board of adjustments annual report. I see you in the audience, Phil Ratusso, but I know your report was submitted and is attached to our agenda, so no in-person report, but not much to talk about. Didn't have any meetings.
We've been real busy.
Well, we like it when you're not busy. It's CDOA, that's a good thing. Good job. Moving on, item eight, work session topics. Eight A, receive and discuss an update regarding capital improvements and drainage projects presented by Director of Engineering, Bill Arias.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm here to present to you the update on CIP and drainage projects. We've got a lot to go through, so I'm going to kind of breeze through a few of these. But if you want me to stop and elaborate on anything, please stop me, and we'll do that. We do have a lot going on. It could have been, we, there's a lot of slides in here. We could have easily broken the John Scott seventy-one slide rule this month, so. So to start, we did have a pavement management study. You see right there's the vans that are used for the management study. They actually finished that last week. They were collecting data, and some of the stuff that they were surveying included the roughness and rutting of streets and surface distresses using laser. And they'll give us a count on that. They're going to take that back, and they will develop a pavement condition index from that data, from that survey. How we use that is we will use that to prioritize projects that need to come up in the next couple of years. We've been doing 1.8 to $2 million a year on projects, and we're getting ready to finalize our list of streets for this year also. We've got about 1.5 million identified for asphalt streets this year, along with some striping to be done and some concrete panels that need to be replaced. So we'll be seeing that coming up here pretty soon.
Hill, can you go back one slide real quick? In light of the comments that were made during the public comment section of the meeting, as you know, the information that's collected from this survey will be input into a ranking system. And based upon the streets that are in the worst conditions, we will present to council a project list within the approved funds to tackle. So the roads in Poly Ranch would have been evaluated. We'll see where they fall in the ranking system.
We do these updated road studies, what, every three to five years?
About every five years. Yes, sir.
Yeah, the last one was done in 2018, so.
That's what I thought.
Next, an update on Black Hawk Boulevard Phase Two. Of course, this is a partnership project that we have with Harris County. Precinct Two, you see right there a drone shot of the work that's ongoing right there. We're getting close to finishing a big majority of the underground work, waterline being the main thing. And once that is done, you'll see the portion underneath, right beside the, all the equipment right there, you'll see that portion repaved. That'll complete the southbound lanes. And then once they're done with that here in the next couple of months, they'll jump over to the northbound lanes and get that started. And then that will tie in with our Phase Two C Black Hawk. This, of course, will finish the rest of Black Hawk Boulevard. And where we're at on that right now, we are working on the engineering for that. Should have that ready to go for bids sometime by the end of the year. And on the theme of partnership projects, wanted to update you guys on the partnership application that was submitted to Precinct Two this year. This was for a traffic signal at the intersection of Bay Area and Gresham. If you guys will remember back a couple of months ago, we had a study that was done by Friendswood Engineering Department and found that that intersection did need to have stop signs installed immediately to address a rash of crashes that had happened there. Since then, City of Lake City has completed a warrant study analysis for a traffic signal there, and we found that the warrants are met. And with this being right on the border of Friendswood with Lake City, this was something that we discussed with staff over at Lake City. We wanted to share the burden on that and felt like this was going to be a really good project for, an application for a partnership project. So where that takes us from here, hopefully it'll get approved. When it does get approved, then we would have that engineered, built. And ultimately, we would like for, we're asking for Harris County to take this into their asset list so that they can take care of it. Also later tonight, we have a a resolution that needs to be done for this. And then here in a couple of weeks, we'll come back to you with a memorandum of understanding to memorialize the agreement that the Lake City and Friendswood have on that. This will probably be my last update on the Black Hawk Facility and Shelter. We are substantially complete. Everybody's in her place, and just going to be lacking a generator. That was a couple of months out, so we're looking at summer before getting that generator installed. It'll power the entire building, including the shelter. Looks great. Next is the fire station number two. We are substantially complete on that. It's been a long time coming. There are some challenges that the contractor had to work through, but we are substantially complete now. And there was a life safety inspection that was completed on Friday, and I found out this morning that that was passed. So next steps is going to be to get our final inspections through the building department, and then we'll be completely done with that. Next is the 24-inch Clear Creek Waterline Crossing Project. We've got some traction on that, things moving. We have geotechnical drilling ongoing right now, and the environmental assessment looking into the possible route for this waterline project. And then we have some surveying going. Once all that is compiled, we'll be able to move into the engineering phase, and we'll have that out for bid by the end of the year. Next is the tank rehab project. There you see the old paint job on the water tower on the south side of town. It's about halfway recoded at this point. Sometimes you'll see a shroud around it while they're doing some work inside. Once that gets recoded, you'll see a nice new logo get painted on there, and it'll be a nice inviting water tower to see on the south side of town. Here's a map of the flood control projects that we have ongoing here in Friendswood. The first one I'm going to mention is the Four Spin Offline Detention Pond Project. We're substantially complete on that also. It's open to the public, great location to go walk in the evenings. They've got some lighted trails there and meandering. What you'll see soon is they're working on getting some grass growing. Originally, they planned that last year during the drought, never took off. But they're trying to get that going. And fortunately, there were some wildflowers that took off. And I think there are some bluebonnets that are starting to bloom out there. So not as many as we would like, so you can't have a great picture opportunity yet, but hopefully next year, that'll be something you can do. Next is the Clear Creek Utility Rack relocation. That is the utility rack over beside Poly Ranch at the Dave Brown Memorial Park. This is something that we've been discussing for a while now, and we finally have some traction on the environmental assessment. We have a final report on that, and we're, staff is reviewing it right now. And then once that is completed, we'll be able to submit for our authority to use grant funds. So once we get that, we can go out to bid. So we're looking at probably this summer to get that all going. And then there's the location where it's at. Frenchman's Creek Green Space. The biggest thing there is the townhomes that the city has obtained, they've been demolished for a while now. The Galveston County portion, those were, have been demolished also. And it says on here that title transfer from Galveston County will be an upcoming activity. We're actually going to be seeing that on the county commissioner's agenda here within the next couple of weeks, and then that'll come over.
The title transfer will be Galveston County, given those properties that they were involved with the buyouts on. I went by there the other day. It absolutely looks amazing. I mean, it's completely leveled, everything's looks, it's just beautiful. And I've just had some questions from people and some on the Galveston County Consolidated Drains District that really think this could be a site for a future flood project, too.
Right.
Yes, sir. And as funding became, becomes available to us, we can look at doing those joint projects. Yes, sir.
And as you mentioned, there's pictures right there of the area leveled out. Big difference there.
Really big difference.
Next is the Deepwood Flood Control Project. So that is similar, that's tied in with the Utility Rack Project. Same update with that. The environmental assessment is getting wrapped up, and so we're looking at roughly the same timeline on getting that completed. This one has a little bit of engineering work left to do, so it might come out after the Utility Rack relocation. But all indication, we are looking at starting construction on that this year.
Hill, I'd just like to mention the Galveston County Consolidated Drains District hadn't been waiting around either. They've already been over there on their Oxbow and have cleared that out over there. So if you get a chance and you want to just ride down Deepwood, go to the very end and just look out over there, and you'll see where they've cleared that out. And they've moved also where Ron Lovely's house was and everything into Quakers Landing. So they're not sitting on their lawls over there either, so it's really looking good.
Yeah.
Long Creek over there.
And so you see this cleared area right here. That is the portion that GCCD obtained, and they did get that cleared out. The city's portion is the wooded area right there. And then once this grant project is all done, we'll be looking at doing a much bigger effort here at some point with the drainage district. That, go ahead.
I was just going to say that that image is very telling, though. The difference between federal funds that have some environmental regulations on them and that of local dollars, the trees having to stay there was part of the environmental component of that.
Absolutely. And that is one of the topics that we have later on this evening. So here's the big project, the Regional Stormwater Detention Basin. This is the partnership project that we have with Galveston County, Flood Control District, and Drains District. Big update on that is they recently bid out and awarded a $5.5 million refraing project. All that means is they're going to start digging some holes out there and as much as they can for, and this is actually going to increase from 5.5, it'll increase a little bit more. They'll be doing a change order here pretty soon. And the intention of that is to use Galveston County's portion, which is tied to ARPA funds, and that has to be encumbered by the end of the year. So it only made sense to move forward with a project like this.
Yeah, they had to go first with the ARPA funds. My understanding here, Hill, is that we've had to go from a possibly 11 to 1300 acre feet to around 760 to 700 acre feet. Is that going to change the dollar amounts that we've committed to this project because we're scaling it back? And if that's so, would we be able to take those dollars and maybe move them into other projects?
The final design on these projects is not completed yet, so the speculation, whether it's 700 or 800 acre feet or 1100 or more acre feet, hasn't been fully determined. A lot of that has to do with the wetlands and stuff that are out at the property. In all likelihood, as we've seen with inflation on other projects, I doubt our dollar commitment goes down, but we'll evaluate that as we get closer to the end. This particular project was one that was slated with the Whitcomb tract. So if funds don't go there, we can look at relocating them to the Whitcomb property.
Okay, good. Thanks.
Right. And like Bo said, that is, the ultimate size is a function of the wetlands. There are some jurisdictional wetlands located on this property. And in addition to that, there are some archaeological artifacts that we have to work around. It's moving into the engineering phase now. And so we'll be able to dig in more into what ultimately this, the size of this detention basin is going to be. One thing that Flood Control District is doing, though, is they are looking into possibility of using, utilizing some of what they have set aside in a wetland mitigation bank. And if this project is eligible for something like that, that means that we can offset some of that wetland that we would disturb and increase the size and capacity of a project here, so. here, so.
Thank you, Hill.
And then we've got the Comprehensive Master Drainage Plan. Where we're at on this, we are still waiting on FEMA to give us a green light on that. That's what we expected to, where we expected to be right now at this time of year. So we're still waiting on it. And our, all indication, they haven't given us any more requests for information or anything, but they're reviewing it right now. And we're looking at possibly the spring to get the green light on that so that we can move forward on that. If you have any questions or comments, I'm happy to take that.
I wanted to comment that I see Samantha Heratose in the audience, our former drainage czar. Thanks for coming back Samantha. And a lot of this work, we know you put in place while you were here. So you're continuing forward with all these great projects to reduce the flooding here. So thank you. Thanks, Hill. Item nine, City Manager's Report presented by City Manager Murad Kabiri.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And before I get started, I want to make a mention, I was informed just before the meeting that former councilmember Bill Holbert passed away today. He served before Councilmember John Scott in that same seat from 2008 to 2011. I don't know the circumstances around his death, but I will, as I learn more details and about arrangements, I'll let council know. So keep his family in your thoughts and prayers. On a brighter note, I want to recognize our Director of Emergency Services, Brian Mansfield, who recently completed his certification for emergency services, or emergency managers. You may recall this time last year, we recognized him for his fire chief designation and certifications that he achieved. So applaud Brian for continually improving his credentials, as do a lot of our staff. Thank you, Brian, for the efforts that you leave. In that same vein, I would like to recognize our own library. They were recently recognized by the Texas Municipal Library Directors Association for their 10th straight year. They're one of 84 libraries, and that sounds like a lot, but out of 545 libraries, that's less than 15%. So to be in the top 15% is spectacular. Honestly, I'll be sad the year they don't receive it, so please keep up the good work. And lastly, you may have seen some crews out and about town removing tall poles with sirens affixed to the top of them. These, these assets were installed back in the mid 90s by Exxon in Exchange Forest, a pipeline they installed. They're outdated, they haven't been operable for two years, and finding the parts to keep them in operation are getting very expensive. Since there's been improvements in technology, that we can have dynamic messaging out there as opposed to unilateral messaging where if there is a pipeline issue, they notify dispatch, then we activate the sirens. We opted to remove them to get rid of any confusion that may exist in the community. These sirens were never intended to be anything but pipeline disasters. We now have the ability with our phones to activate messaging, dynamic messaging to our citizens much quicker and much more informative, so we remove the sirens.
Thanks, Murad.
Thank you.
Any comments? Before I move on, speaking of work being done around the city, I wanted to recognize our Public Works Crew, Renee Abara and Steve Avreka. Councilmember Matrangia and I were out doing a sidewalk tour of the city this morning and came across one of your crews repairing a sidewalk there in front of Jiffy Lube. Sidewalk I've probably stumbled over for about three years now. Now granted, you didn't know that it was broken until probably Richard Sass and let you know, but I appreciate that that bubbled up to the top of the job jar. And I've already driven past it, it looks amazing, already repaired. And thank you for all the great work you do. And you know, we task you with a lot of things, and then you find extra time sometimes to do other things that you find that need to be done. So thank you, guys. Appreciate you. Item 10, Business Items. Consider authorizing an interlocal collection agreement with Galveston County for collection services related to Friendswood City Center Public Improvement District. Motion in a second. Motion in a second. A motion in a second. Are there discussions? Does anybody want to ask a question about this?
Just so you're familiar with the topic, we recently approved the Public Improvement District out at the Whitcomb property, Friendswood City Center. This is an agreement for the collection of those pit assessments that will be applied to only those properties within that 106 acre development. Since we contract with Galveston County for the collection of our taxes, it made sense to do the same with this pit assessment.
It's just funny that the Whitcomb property is in Harris County, but because we kind, like you just said, we contract with Galveston County and they...
And they collect our taxes for both the Harris County side of the city as well as the Galveston County side. They do at a fraction of the cost.
Yes. All right. Have a motion in a second, all in favor. 7-0. 10B, consider authorizing an interlocal agreement with Galveston County Consolidated Drainage District for the Deepwood Drainage Improvement Project. Can I get a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Rocky and Branson. Any discussion? I think we heard about it, Hill, thank you. All in favor? 7-0. 10C, consider authorizing an interlocal agreement with Friendswood Independent School District for school resource officers.
Motion to approve.
Thanks, Trish. I have a second, second by Mayor Pro-Town.
So just, well, just to add, this is similar to agreements that we've had in past years. I've told you all for the last five years that I was working towards a net zero as far as subsidy for the city's cost of these services. Historically, this has been a partnership between the city and FISD dating back to the early 2000s, if not late 90s. Originally it was funded with the grant, and that grant went away shortly after the program got up and running, which was the intent of the grant, was to get these similar programs running. It's been a great partnership. This year, due to school finance issues with the state, they've asked that the city take on a bit more than we had in previous years. This year, the city's contribution towards the agreement's 190,000 or 195,000 as opposed to 103,000 this past year. So with that, I turn it over to council for any questions or comments.
I think, speaking for myself at least, we're in favor of this. We want to be good partners with school district, obviously. We'd hate for anything to happen if SROs weren't out there. What, just to make it clear, what would be the delta between 195 and what we were proposing as we were stepping down? So the increase this year is approximately what? Now granted, we didn't have an agreement before we went.
So this year would have been zero. So two years ago, we were at 220,000. We brought it down to 103,000 this current school year. This next school year, it's going back up to 195.
Okay. So just to be clear, that's about a half a cent in our tax rate. But I think, speaking for myself again, I'm in favor of that because we don't want anything to happen in Friendswood to our kids. So we want to be good, good partners with the school district, so.
May I say so?
Councilmember Hanks, yes?
Since the state is sitting on a $33 billion surplus and did not give districts money for security, I think it's put them in a horrible position. And no one in Friendswood, no matter what, who they pay their taxes to, wants anything to happen to our children. So that's first and foremost. But we also have economic development grants, and Friendswood ISD and our other school districts are our number one economic drivers in Friendswood. They're the reason that these beautiful homes are being built here. And so I think that anything that we can do to help them is warranted for multiple reasons.
Councilmember Herronworth.
Yeah, I've got a few comments on this. And you know, there's three taxing entities in this city that we all have the same, we all have the same customer, and it's the taxpayer. And I think that a lot of times, we need to be working together to find what our common needs are versus our wants. And I acknowledge that we got hit with an unfunded mandate here. And I recognize that, you know, there's a lot of things that go into this, and I've taken a lot of notes here. I'm just trying to say where I feel on this. And I acknowledge that some of my comments, you know, are going to be criticized because I sometimes feel that this council becomes the catchall be all for when other boards aren't spending properly, and that we get hit with things that ultimately we have to do tax increases that come back. And I think there's been a history while we're on this topic that frustrates me with some of the emails and the criticizing in regards to permitting of certain things and the way our staff's treated when projects are delayed. And I watch things, and then it's easy to come and just ask for money whenever they need it. And if we don't give this money, we're the bad guy. And we're all Friendswood, and we all care about the same things. And when I see this request, I feel like when something's needed, we're asked about this. And again, you know, I'm not up here to make friends, and if we make friends up here, then we're probably doing something wrong. So I have a couple reasons that I'm not saying that I'm voting no for this, but I just want to bring up some red flags about this. I believe that a better fund allocation on the school board could have, we're all a business, and it could have been operated a little better. We have to examine these budgets just like our city does and put before the wants before the needs. When I review the latest financials, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, $13.6 million or so in savings over there? I know this is a tough cost, that there's plenty of ways to fund this. We already have a tight budget where we're losing employees. We have to raise what we pay people. Anything we say yes to now could turn into a no down the road that could ultimately hurt There's a lot of assets around this town that I think the school district could sell off that aren't on the tax scrolls, the old junior high land, just various things that are out there. We don't have the financial rescue here to come ask mom and dad for more money. We ask all y'all out there. And I see that as an issue. Third thing I question is, you know, I've had discussions with CCISD, and while I don't agree with how they're going to do theirs, I think it's fair to say that if we grant any kind of request like this, what do we owe them? Historically, it seems like FISD's focus is just about FISD, but everybody up here services all of Friendswood, and we have to think about that. So and if you look around at the future tax growth of this city, things Tanos is doing, those are on the Harris County side of Friendswood. So we have to think about that side, that side too. So in closing, if safety truly matters, the district should be able to help us secure these funds without compromising on essential. The aesthetics of buildings and the facilities means little if they're unsafe or unaffordable for the residents, the teachers, the firefighters, and they're driving the taxpayer out of the city. We got to prioritize our needs over the wants, returning to the principles of our community. With that said, what troubles me most in my mind is regards to the safety, particularly in the way we ignored our former police chief's continued safety recommendations and concerns about the glass and the safety concerns at the new climb. This personally keeps me up at night, as it seems like it could be an accident waiting to happen because no one wanted to listen to the city's recommendations about that building. I urge the council to take into consideration of the long-term consequences, recognizing that every affirmative response to a funding request detax from a future potential need. What we say yes to today is potentially a no tomorrow. And what if a day comes when we might need to allocate these funds elsewhere, such as a cost of living adjustment for our own employee, be much more beneficial? So I'm not saying no to this, I'm just saying I don't think we're ready to make this vote.
Any other comments? Mayor Pro-Town, Rocky?
I think Councilman Herronworth makes some good points, but I would like to counter with, the school district is faced, as you said, with an unfunded mandate. And a bunch of politics playing with vouchers and all that that's caused all this. Maybe it rectifies in the next session, let's hope so. But in the meantime, if the school district can't fund these officers, they have an option of looking elsewhere, of going to private services or going to the county and all that. And I feel that would be terrible. The one advantage Friendswood has when it pleases its schools is we are geographically small. Our police can be at any one of those schools in one or two minutes. I've gotten twice, I've participated in the active shooter drills they do in the summer, and it's pretty darn good training. And so I feel like we owe to this community one way or another, using FPD to police those schools. And, you know, we know up here that we fund our police very well, they've got great equipment, and their training is wonderful. And I think we need to keep that. And if I, you know, we're all taxpayers, I don't have kids in the school anymore, but I don't think I would care if I did, who paid it, as long as, as long as we got the best. And I think the best is using FPD in these schools. And that's why I would support it. I think Brent, you're right on a lot of points, and I do wish the district would, would be a little more cooperative sometimes and not necessarily point the finger at our professionals who are just doing their job on permits. All that does bother me. But in this case, I really think this is a vote to put the best officers we possibly can in those schools.
Councilmember Branson?
I would just like to echo what Steve just said. I know this is probably not the least expensive choice that FISD could make, but I do, I have grandchildren in the district, and I'm tickled to death that FPD is on the job and protecting all those children. And I realize this is an unfunded mandate. Brent, you've made some excellent points. I feel like this is a problem, that it's a community problem, that we all need to roll up our sleeves and work together to help resolve this. It's, my understanding, this potentially is a one-year problem. So for me, I don't think this is going to be a recurring funding request from the district. They're trying to solve this themselves, but this year, it's my place to go. So I appreciate if this council would support this and would help provide this funding for our school district, because I do think our children are worth it. I think Councilmember Hanks made a great point. The reason people moved to Friendswood is schools and safety. Let's get real. And that's both of us. That's the school and the city that provide those things jointly. So I think it's important that we work together on this issue that they have been presented with. It's caused a financial issue. I realize come budget time, we might be making some tough decisions, and I think we all need to be prepared for that. But I think this is the right decision right now. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Matrangia?
Yeah, I mean, for such a, I mean, I look at their requests, FISD's request is fairly straightforward and simple for just assistance and funding. But actually, as you can see, everybody's listening to this, this is a complicated subject. And the more you dig into it, the more complicated it becomes. Some of the things that you very well brought up, and I think in many of those, I agree with you. You know, the school district has reserve funding, why aren't they using that? But they have, there's lots of things that we could ask, why isn't the school board doing this or doing that? But they've made a request to us, and it's a straightforward request. Can we help them with a funding gap? And while they're debating all the issues and the concerns, and we're talking, we're trying to work through our concerns with some of their past decisions, I really believe, and I think everybody up here, I would think believes, that the safety of the children in Friendswood is paramount. And I personally believe strongly that having Friendswood officers in our schools is the best way to help keep our children safe. It's a key component, along with parents, along with administrators, along with teachers and everybody else, that's with the same goal of keeping our kids safe. So I support this, approving this. It does come with some challenges and some things to think about, but they've made a request, and I for one, want to absolutely support them in getting as many of our Friendswood officers in the schools as we can, we can get.
Councilmember Brefan?
I'm 100% behind the goal of our city manager and our city staff to get to net zero. I believe FISD has a responsibility to get their physical house in order so that they can fund the security they need at the school. We just now voted on Galveston County Consolidated, I mean, Galveston County Central Appraisal District to collect our taxes for the new pit. My understanding, we could save a little over $100,000. We're at, they're asking us to up our commitment $95,000. With a stroke of a pen, if someone else... With a stroke of a pen, if someone else collected their taxes, we wouldn't have to come out of that $95,000. Again, my brother is at the high school. I would prefer FPD be at the high school. The response time in like Steve Rocky, I have been in the live shooting exercises that they do and our people are incredible. It's scary and it's incredible what they do. And they move forward and they go forward and they go after it. But I too, and with Murad that, we have, we have got to figure out a way that we reduce our obligation and everybody can stand on their own two feet. I'm going to support this because I do believe it's a one-time deal. I hope it's a one-time deal. I understand that about $1.8 million in deficit. They've lost some 47 to 49 teachers. I don't know if they're going to renew contracts and maybe reduce more staff that way. But I think the board at FISD needs to get their physical house in order, but I will support this this time. And they may need to think about selling some property. I know some private developers that would love to jump on that junior high 10 or 12 acres or 18 acres or whatever it is and really have a downtown center. That could be a huge windfall. And like Joe said, he knows they're setting on reserve dollars. So yeah, this is a big ask and you all know me, I'm physically diving into our budget and Sally mentioned it, we're all going to be sitting here at budget time going, where's that other 9,500, 95,000 or 100,000 coming from? But again, my brother's there. I might have some children going there, grandchildren going there and I want the kids to be safe in Friendswood. Bottom dollar.
Can I say one more thing?
You can.
And where I was going is that I 110% want to see FISD at the schools. I have kids there. I'm probably one of the biggest, if not the biggest, police supporter in this city on this dais. And what this is more about is the path we get to this without creating a deficit for us. I just want to make that clear that I want to see the cops there. I am going to support this, you know. I just, I, like these two gentlemen said, other people got to get their house in order because everything's falling on us. And last time I checked, anytime there's a tax rate increase, everybody wants to come after us. And we can't just, we can't, we have nowhere to run but to the taxpayer because we all have the same customer. So I just wanted to close with that.
Thanks Brent. Have a motion in a second. All in favor? Thank you. Item 10D, consider authorizing a professional services agreement with PGAL Inc. for the Friendswood Civic Center Replacement Project and the Library Expansion Project.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any questions on this? Do you have a question? No? Okay, all in favor? Thank you, Hill. 10E, consider authorizing the professional services agreement with Brinkley Sergeant Wigginson Architects Inc. for the Council Chamber renovation project.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. So I'll just throw it out there. Can we use?
Peg dollars.
Peg dollars for this?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Peg dollars, those dollars that don't get spent on anything except AV equipment and things that Terry likes to play with, I guess.
It's called Terry's Budget.
Terry's Budget, okay. So I think, anybody have questions for Terry about that?
I have a question, comment. I mean, I know from personal experience, I've seen this in the short time I've been on council, there's a lot of times you guys do a lot of work preparing the room for meetings, recording meetings and the sound doesn't work. They're scrambling to reconnect things just because somebody moved their foot the wrong way.
Yes, sir.
Things fall from ceilings at times. I mean, so.
Yes, sir.
So I mean, there's, it's not just, I mean, just something we want to do. It's something we need to do to make the system better. So if you've got a comment to that.
Is that screen over there broken or did you just turn that off?
I wanted to point out on the record that I had nothing to do with that.
It's not there just to influence the vote. It's, this place does need to be revamped. We actually voted for this a couple of years ago. It never happened, right?
Yep, and. It did and I don't want to steal Terry's thunder, but yes, y'all approved an analysis, not of just the audiovisual stuff, but of the entire facility. We don't have the funding to do the entire facility. So what this is, is a reduced scope for just the auto, audiovisual. And with that, I'll turn it over to our Director of IT.
Correct. So the, as Councilmember Matranga said, we've had a lot of issues. The AV system is aging. The typical lifecycle for an AV system is about five to seven years, depending on use, depending on, you know, the technology. Ours is between, there's been a couple of different renovations done that were partial and most of our equipment is six to seven years old right now. So we do, obviously, we have some unreliable components. As Councilmember Matranga said, we've got some components that are diving off the other components and trying to get out of their work. But you know, we've also, over the last couple of years, installed a backup system. The speakers and microphones right there and then the camera is the black camera back there. So that's our backup system in case the main system does fail as a whole. As Murad said, in 2022, we went out for RFQ, Request for Qualifications. We selected Macklemore Long and we did an analysis and that came back with unfavorable cost. So what we did was we started talking about AV-only upgrade. And at that point, that's when my predecessor left the city, who was the project manager of the project. We have done some work with some AV consultants over the last couple of months and found out that this is not going to be an AV-only project simply because some of the stuff that we want to do are scalable, environment, better lighting, cross-functional use. So this room is used during the day as a meeting room for other things such as new employee orientation, things of that nature. So some of the things that we want to do is extend out the booth back there, which will have some ADA implications. We're going to need some lighting. We're going to need to put in a false ceiling for the cabling because the conduit that is currently being used for this equipment is full and flooded from what I understand. So the design, you know, is going to be scalable. One of the things that we're kind of facing right now is we have a part of the system fail. Well, that has a trickle-down effect. There are other things that's connected that have certain types of connectors and all that fun stuff and I won't bore you with that and make your eyes gloss over. But things are replaced and they don't work as they used to, which makes our job harder. It makes Katie's job harder as she does the video editing and uploading and all that fun stuff. So just to give you some information about why we're looking at using BSW, the principal architect at BSW is Ryan Macklemore. He is of the company that Macklemore Long, who we chose through the RFQ. He has since left and is working with BSW and we feel like we can capitalize on some of those dollars that we spent with that original RFQ and get the project kicked off a little bit quicker. Questions or comments?
What kind of cost are we looking at? Do we have, just a guesstimate?
We do. So one of the things that we did with Mr. Macklemore was ask him to give us an estimate of what it was going to cost with construction and all the technology and we're looking at about a $400,000 spend.
And what do you do with us in the interim?
So the construction phase, I believe, was a couple of months, two, three months. So one of the suggestions was to hold the council meetings over at the library.
And all of the totality of the project would be funded with peg dollars. So even though we're talking $400,000, it's a lot of money. Those are funds that cannot be used for anything else. So they're not tax dollars. They're separate.
No SROs.
We would be in violation of state law if we use those funds to fund SRO.
Just checking. Terry, when are you going to get rid of that Wisconsin accent? You're in Texas now.
I've only been here for seven months, sir. Give me some time.
Takes a while. Okay. Well, thank you, sir. I got a motion in a second. All in favor? Item 10, 10F, consider authorizing a professional services agreement with Five Engineering LLC for preliminary design services associated with the lift station number 27 improvements project.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any questions on lift station? All in favor? 10G, consider authorizing a professional services agreement with Five Engineering LLC for preliminary design services associated with the lift station number eight improvement project. Motion?
I make the motion.
Second.
Motion in a second. Questions? All in favor? Thanks, Hill. Item 11, May 4, 2024, general election. The next item is to receive the certificate of unopposed status for the positions of mayor, councilmember position one and councilmember position three. Copy of the certificate was included in our backup material and the original was just delivered to me by the city secretary. Therefore, I announce that the certificate of unopposed candidates has been delivered to and received by city council. Now move to item 11B. Item 11B, consider an ordinance declaring, one, the unopposed candidate Mike Foreman elected to the office of mayor. Two, the unopposed candidate John Ellisor elected to the office of councilmember position one. And three, the unopposed candidate Trish Hanks elected to the office of councilmember position three and canceling the associated May 4, 2024 general election.
I make the motion.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? I didn't think so. All in favor?
And that saved us how much money not putting on that election?
So we still have to have an election for the street sales tax reauthorization, but.
You're saving, sorry.
Doesn't save us any.
Darn it. But it gives you a good opportunity to engage your state representative to extend the life of that street maintenance sales tax to maybe eight or 10 years so we don't have to have this every four years.
We all be putting out something that'll say about the sales tax thing.
So we have some informational material on our website as of right now, but as we get closer to the May election, we'll have more information out there.
And I know I've had questions on this, but the road study and the $1.8 million that we're spending is coming from that. And I know some people have asked me about other roads other than what Rusty had mentioned.
And with that, we'll stop talking about the election so that we don't say too much.
Okay, sorry about that.
You can just educate.
Yes, but.
Thank you for educating us a little bit on where that money is going. Yes. Item 12A, consider an ordinance amending the city's general budget for fiscal year 23, 24 by approving budget amendment four and providing for supplemental appropriation and/or transfer of certain funds. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor? 12B, consider on final reading an ordinance approving a rate adjustment for solid waste collection and disposal. Do I have a motion?
Motion approved. Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor? 12C, consider a resolution authorizing funding for the Harris County Precinct 2 partnership application for the Bay Area Boulevard and Grissom Road intersection signalization project.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any more questions on this? Hill is ready to jump up there. No? All in favor? Thanks, Hill. I think you can go home. Item 13, consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Motion, all in favor? Do we really want to do motion to adjourn or can I just bang my thing? Adjourn.